Friday, July 28th. Board of Equalization meeting to order. First item is roll call, Mr. Brett Towns.
President.
And I'm Patrick Crowley, and I happen to be here. All right, the first item in discussion, possible action regarding approval of the minutes of July 24th and 25th of 2023. Go ahead and move.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes from July 24th, 2023, and July 25th, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have six properties for the board. First one is BOE number 199. And for the address, I've got a question mark. Looks like the assessor has assessed, oh, whatever it is. Kind of curious. It appears anyway from the appellate sheet that the assessor initially headed at 7,689,692, and then it went up to 7,804,111. Am I correct on that, assessor?
Yes.
Looks like the taxpayer is asking for 1,399,342. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, well, tell us about what you want us to know about wherever the property is.
So, this is the email we received this morning that there's been an agreement.
Okay. All right, yeah, according to this email from Chris Whipple?
That's me.
Okay. There's been an agreement of the parties at 6,144,989. Is that the agreement?
Yes, sir.
Assessor?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have an agreement on BOE 199, on property wherever it is.
I move that we set the fair market value of BOE number 199 at, by agreement of the parties,
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to, you got any more on the front of the board?
I think that's the only one I've got today. Thank you for your time.
Sorry you had to come on for just that.
Yeah, I'll take it.
It was a difficult struggle.
Absolutely. Thank you for working with us on that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item is BOE number 200, which is account number ending in 8107. The property is 713 Market Drive. Let's see, the assessor has assessed this at 64,735, and it looks like taxpayer wants 36,997. Is this a phone?
It is. I'm calling her right now.
Would I be correct in saying Tenashu Zhao?
Yes, hi, this is Tenashu Zhao.
Good morning, Michelle. This is Patrick Crowley, Chairman of the Board of Equalization in Oklahoma County. I believe you have a number of properties on the board, in front of the board this morning. The first one we have is account number ending in 8107. It's the property of 713 Market Drive.
Yes.
And the assessor has assessed it at 64,735, and you're asking for 36,997. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Tell us what you want us to know about this property, Michelle.
Yes, basically, the problem we have is the assessor is using 20-year life or longer life for the asset. So for the machinery equipment, based on the publication from the Oklahoma Tax Commission, it should be like around 10-year life for the machinery equipment. But we were assessed by 20-year life.
Okay. And what exactly is this property at 713 Market Drive?
Let me, let me open the, I'm sorry, I didn't open every single account. I have the biggest account open, but give me one second.
Sure.
So it's overall, this is oil and gas company. Used to be Slumber Jay, they had the different divisions. And then, let me open that. Sorry.
I hear five.
Yeah, because I have five accounts, and it's all about the same. Oh, that's a square man. It's a very small account, so it's not many assets there. So I can give you an idea. This won't have too much detail. Oh, just bear with me, let me open my work paper so I can provide you better information.
So this is at the?
So this is, basically, like, I can give you some example of what the detail included in the asset listing. So a bunch of those are the 3.85 roller bogie. I researched on it, the life for that, usually for the industry standard is only six year.
All right, all right, let's make this easy on us here. What exactly is this property? You said it's oil and gas. We talking about pipelines?
Yes.
Okay.
So the company, they have?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so we understand what we're doing. And the pipeline that we're dealing with here at 713 Market Drive is still in place and being used. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so they have, the majority of the equipment is the 3.85 roller bogie. And based on my research for the industry, that life should be around like six year. So usually, it won't last longer than that. And we applied a nine-year life for this when we calculate the depreciation. So we came out the value 36,000. But I believe the assessor is using much longer life for it. And with the transector, that's even more, much higher for the value.
Anything else you want to tell us right now? Have you been before the board before?
No, Oklahoma Board, I have been working with the state. I don't work with the local jurisdiction that much.
Okay. Way it's worked, we're going to listen to you, everything you want to tell us about this property. Then we'll have, the assessor will tell us what he thinks about it, and then you'll have a chance to respond to the assessor.
Okay.
All right, anything else you want to tell us at this juncture?
No, for this account, that's all I want to say.
Okay. That was there from the assessor.
I agree, I agree with the tax representative on, it's not a huge value on this account. But we did go with our expert industry valuation group task. And that's the value they gave us. As far as the, the year life, I just simply and respectfully disagree with the life she's given on this, any oilfield equipment, it lasts a little bit longer than that. So that's the reason for the valuation that we have.
Okay. As far as you know, this pipeline's still in place and being used.
So is this a pipeline or, because this is at Slumber, this is at the Slumber Jay headquarters, corporate headquarters, I didn't think they'd have production equipment type there.
I don't show that it is pipeline, no, sir.
It was submitted to us just as machinery equipment.
This is not a pipeline, this is just their facility. So they're making the product, and they're using some machinery equipment.
Okay. And that machinery and equipment, is that what we're talking about as far as value?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
All right. Presume the machinery is still in place and being used. Okay. Anything else from the assessor?
No.
20 years, the industry standard across the board. It's what we use for all oil and gas equipment.
Okay. Do you hear that?
They don't, they don't replace it every six years.
That's correct. Do you hear that?
Yes, I hear that, but I also have assessment from other companies. So we're not being treated equally here. Like the same state in Oklahoma, we have other counties, we have been assessed much lower life than that.
Yeah, we can't speak to what other counties.
Yeah, you're not talking about Oklahoma County, you're talking about some of the other county?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's all from the assessor. All right, anything else from you, Michelle, on this property?
No.
All right. We'll, I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number 200, open up the hearing on BOE 201, which is account number ending in 5069. This is property at 845 Southeast 29th Street. Looks like the assessor has assessed it at 51,312,316 initially. And then at the informal, went down to 47,73,572. Is that, are those numbers correct?
Yes, sir.
Assessor, okay. And it looks like the taxpayer is asking for 21,246,785. Is that correct, Michelle?
I had my colleague did the informal, so we have rendered 17 million. But we also have, I think that's what the number my colleague put in there. Because I didn't do the informal myself.
All right, what is the amount that you're asking for, for the taxpayer here?
I will go with that 21 million.
Okay. All right, it's 21,246,785. Tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Okay, so same as the other one, the machinery equipment, I think the life has been overstated, like 20-year. And I do have some example I can give to you. So for this company, they are trying to do a clean-up, and you can see a lot of their equipment and machinery is really old. For this location or this account, it goes all the way to 1977. So client has told us they have a lot of, they call the gold asset. You know, when you have the physical and the book asset, a lot of time, it doesn't match each other. So they're doing a clean-up project, but unfortunately, they don't have a good count yet, so we have to file with their book. So the equipment, like, starts in 1977. It probably no longer there anymore, but because it's still on the book, we have to report it. We don't have any other resource or proof to say, okay, you already have that before. So that's why we reported. So my point is, I want to show you, a lot of those assets, they are super old. They probably no longer exist, or they are having a huge obsolescence, like they're probably just put outside, not really using it. Because we were told by the time they are having this clean-up project, to clean up the gold asset. They have it on the book, but it's probably not physically even there. And we all have the common sense for those machinery equipment, it's not, it's not going to last that long. So based on client told us, their engineering department cannot share the information, most of those assets, the equipment, machinery, it will last around from 10 to 12 years only. After that, they cannot use it. And so first, it's probably physically not there at all. And second, with the, the function or the, both the function of lessons and the economics of lessons, it will get the value up. Because Oklahoma, you have that transector, or the assessor is using the transector. So the value for the old asset gets trended up. We disagree with that. And I put, I actually just sent an email this morning, trying to put in my talking point. So for this account, I did a little bit more research in detail. 60% of the assets are floor at the 20% of the cost, which means that they have really old asset there. And some of the machinery equipment is already 46 years old. And we all know it won't last, last that long. And according to my client, those could be the gold asset. It's not even physically exists, but because it's on the book, we have to report it. So we don't think those part of the value should be trended up, but we understand you use the transector. So we request additional of lessons for those. And also, I put a little table to show you, the company overall is not doing as good as the industry. So we did the comparison with the S and P 500, and also the industry wise, to show the gross margin and the EBITDA, also the operating margins, net margins. They're all like very behind. So we also request some additional economics of lessons. So my problem number one is the life of the machinery equipment. Again, we request that to be 10 to 12 years. And second is the really old asset, we know is probably not physically located there at all. And then third is the obsolescence we're requesting here.
All right, now when you say the machinery that's on your books is no longer there, has it been replaced with newer machinery? Is that what you're saying?
Not replaced, they just disposed, but they have to do the P and S to take that paperwork off their book. So anything new, they definitely on the book. But anything old, they didn't really dispose it properly. So it was sitting there for a year. That was the company's suffering.
Well, I have a question. If you're saying that you have equipment no longer useful, that may be disposed of, not even there, and your client doesn't clean up his books, you want us to sit here and take your word for it that it isn't there?
I'm not saying you want to take my word there, I just want to show you the problem we're facing here. So if you have machinery equipment already 46 years old, you can, I mean, the common sense, you know those won't be able to use anymore. So I'm just showing you, like, the value is overstated for those machinery equipment. I know you can't take it off based on nothing, because that's just my words, I hope they understand that. You have to have proof, know that it's old. Same here, as the tax agent, whatever on their book, what they provide, we have to report it. So we can't just say, oh, you think it's not there, let's take it off. We can't do that. So we're being honest, we put on the return for everything, but we know some of those probably no longer exist. Therefore, we request on the value side, you consider those not trended up for the value, and let's just take it like 20% of floor value to be reasonable.
Okay. All right, anything else at this point? Hello?
Yes, I'm here. No, I'm good, that's all I want to address for this account.
Okay. We'll hear from the assessor.
Yes, I have not received an email yet, but I'll look forward to your talking points. The, one thing I wanted to say about the equipment that probably might not be there. If, if you don't know, if your equipment is there, we don't know if the equipment, that the equipment is not there. Other than that, the, the year life on this equipment is well beyond 10 years, 15, 20 years. This oilfield equipment can last in the field for forever, really.
I had a question, is this, this is Cameron vows?
Yeah, Cameron.
So they make vows and fittings for anything probably from low pressure to high pressure?
Yep, the Christmas trees that you see out in the field forever.
So it's really what we're talking about is the manufacturing equipment that manufactures those items, right?
Yes.
And then any inventory that would be there at a time that, that this takes place?
Yes.
So they provide you the equipment that's in their facility. And without that, you, I mean, because you haven't done a visual on this.
No, have not.
Okay. So we have to take their word, what's in there and what's there in the life? And I guess there were values on it at some point?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, again, we use TASK as the valuation team, they're the experts in the field. They've, they've evaluated this company for several years. The 51 million that we started with was the TASK value. And then just, you know, based on their economic obsolescence and their, you know, other obsolescence that they're asking for, we thought the, and we thought the best fair and equitable way to go about this would be to take the last year's value that was agreed upon, less the disposals that they had throughout the 12 months. And that's how we came up with that value.
You mean how you went down from 51 to 47?
Yes.
It's over a 10% drop.
Yes, sir.
And that 51 last year was agreed upon?
No, the 47 two was agreed upon.
51 is where we started this year. That's where we began for 23.
47 two?
Yes.
42 last year, and went up to 51, and then they brought it back down to 47.
I got 47,73,572. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, we didn't, really didn't see anything that was, that would lead us to believe that in 12 months, the value could drop 26 million dollars. So it really, that's when we went back to last year's value, and then asked if they had any disposals, and then went from there. So the value that you stated is, is our value.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Any response, Michelle, on this?
Yes, one thing I want to point out, this is not the pipeline by itself. This is the manufacturer to make the, the parts, make the tools, make the, the equipment there. So it's not the pipeline itself. I just want to point out this. So it's more like a factory. I have seen a few tours to their locations in Houston, similar facility. So they're using the machinery equipment to make the parts, or make the, the tools, or the machinery for the oil and gas, the pipeline. It's not the pipeline itself. So you have to imagine this is for the fact, the factory, it's not the oil and gas for the pipeline.
Yes, we already established that. So we, we understand that it manufactures the oil field carts and equipment.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I'm very glad to hear that, because I don't want to confuse you guys think about this is the pipeline by itself. Pipeline will last longer, I hope they understand that. But the manufacturer of those equipment, you have to keep replace it, and it will, it won't last forever of like 20 or 20 years. I mean, it only lasts like 10 to 12 years maximum. That's what we heard from the friend, the client, from their engineer department.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing on BOE number 201, open up the hearing on BOE 203. This is account number ending in 6333. Looks like the assessor initially headed at 556,201, and at the informal, it's like came down at 406,938. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes, sir.
All right. And the taxpayer is asking for 355,875. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, tell us what you want us to know about this property. And tell us what it is. Is it a pipeline or what?
It is still the manufacturer, it's one of their divisions. So it is a different facility. So we had a similar issue, also the life of the asset. We disagree with 20-year life. And also, some of the rental tool has been using like much longer life. So the rental tool, or the tool by itself, we think it should be six-year life.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Yes, gosh, we're so close on this. We did, we did the same thing. It was, we thought we were getting really close to what they're asking here. Agreed value last year was 406,938. There were zero disposals, so we stayed with that amount. Did not account for inflation, gave them the benefit, and gave them the same value from last year.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, can you hear all that, Michelle?
Yes.
All right, any response?
No.
I have a question. You are consistently saying you want to hold to a six-year life. You want to do that for tax purposes? Or are you saying after six years, hey, pitch this equipment and purchase either refurbished or buy new? And if that, if that's what you're saying, can you ever show the assessor that you've purchased new equipment? Which is going to put you at a higher valuation, I might add.
It's, no, it's not a replacement, they have to dispose those if they purchase new. So they will book the new ones, they will dispose the old ones.
And are you saying, now, if that is what is occurring on this six-year life, would there be a higher valuation than you're asking for?
No, because what's on the book, that's the correct life you have there. So like I said, when we start, some of those assets, if you see it's really old, like the one like in 1977, those probably no longer exist. I mean, I can't provide you a proof, but I just want to explain why we're reporting those. You probably will ask, like, if you say it's only lasts six years, or 10 years, or 12 years, why you still reporting those? So that's why we are reporting it, because those are still sitting on the book. They should do a clean-up to dispose those from their book, because physically, we, they, they don't have a count, and they can't do that. That's why you're seeing like old assets sitting on the book, we're still reporting it. It doesn't mean those are still functional, or they are still using it.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No.
Uh, we'll close the hearing on, oh, did I get the assessor on this one?
Yes.
Okay, uh, they're all running together here. Uh, we'll close the hearing on BOE number two oh three, and open up a hearing on BOE two, two oh four, which is account number ending in eight, zero, five, seven. It's a property at seventy-five hundred Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street. Looks like the assessor initially had this at seven million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, and came down to, at the informal, seven million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes.
And, uh, you, the taxpayer is asking for two million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four. Is that correct, Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
All right.
That's correct.
Tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Uh, the major question, or the problem for this account is the machinery equipment has been assessed for twenty-year life, so we request that to be assessed under ten to twelve-year life. If there's a tool, it should be six-year life.
Okay. Anything else you want to tell us at this point?
No, no.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Yes, she's correct, we do have that on twenty-year life. Um, you know, we did the same on this one, we, we deducted the disposals from the last year's agreed value. Um, and again, we didn't receive anything compelling that would, that would drop the value from, in twelve months, four point five million dollars.
So this is another Cameron manufacturing site?
Yes.
Okay. Just trying to find some other information on it.
It's at Rockwell, Twenty-Ninth and Rockwell, just west of Rockwell. With the industrial area down there.
It's an industrial company.
All right, any other questions from the board?
No.
Uh, anything else from the assessor?
No, sir.
All right, we'll hear from you now, uh, the response, Ms. Shaw.
Uh, yes, I just want to point out, because I know the assessor cannot start from last year's value, so, um, I think, we, so we're the new tax agent, we review everything in detail for this client. Uh, we disagree with, um, what has been assessed in the past, if it's the same asset. It's only because the, uh, former tax agent, they didn't read the question, but that doesn't mean it's correct, so that's what I want to put in there. Understand you cannot roll over the value from private here, uh, we disagree with that.
Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, we'll close the hearing on BOE two oh four, and open up a hearing on BOE two oh five, which is account number ending again, two eight, two three. Uh, it looks like the assessor initially had it at a million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars, and at the informal, came down to one million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes.
And it looks like the taxpayer is asking for eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Is that correct, Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
All right, tell us what you want us to know about this property. This is seventy-five hundred Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, Unit A, whatever that might be.
Um, similar to the other four accounts, we just talked through. So the machinery equipment, the life, the assessor used in twenty years, we disagree with that, we recommend to, uh, assess it under like ten to twelve-year life.
Okay, so this is a manufacturing site, too?
Correct.
All right. Anything else at this point, Ms. Shaw?
No, that's why I want to address.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
The, the twenty-year life is used across the board for all oil and gas companies, for all machinery and equipment. So I just want to state that.
Is that some sort of industry sta- standard?
It is.
Okay.
And I think you can say that's generally, but you couldn't say that about a drill bit, things like that?
Yes, sir, correct.
So there are, there are items that would be less
Yes.
across the, the industry, but in manufact-, you're talking about manufacturing the equipment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Versus tubes?
Yes, yes, yeah, instead of manufacturing and equipment, it's manufacturing equipment.
Okay.
Um. Our, our experts at Task valued this at one million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, six forty-seven. We did, uh, you know, we didn't add any inflation to this, we did not, uh, receive any substantial evidence to decrease the value, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand in twelve months. We used last year's agreed upon value, less disposals, which there were none, and used the same value, one million, five eighty-six, six fifty-one.
Okay, I didn't have one of the three, what's, what was last year's value?
One million, eight-
One?
One million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, six fifty-one.
Okay, I do have that number, I was on, I apologize, I've been short-sheeded by the secretary here. Got all this kind of running together. Uh, I'm sorry, I do have that million, five eighty-six, six fifty-one figure. All right, anything else from the assessor?
No.
All right, Michelle, you, any response?
Uh, yes, so I know you, you're over from last year for value, but we disagree with that. So I, I, we don't think it's, uh, to start with, that would be not right. And the life should be like ten to twelve years.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Close the hearing on BOE two oh five, which is number seven on our docket, and then ends the last one on our docket. Yeah, uh, Ms. Shaw, appreciate your preparation, give it something to think about. And, uh, this is, this closes out all the property that you're on, okay?
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Sure, all right, goodbye.
I have a general, uh, theoretical question. If there have been no purchases, and even if you're employing a twenty-year life and a ten to twelve for equipment, would there not be a diminution in value from one year to the next?
There would, up until, um, I believe the cap is twenty percent.
Yeah, until it maxes out.
Until it maxes-
And also, the factors that they use to make those assessments can change from year to year,
Oh, I see.
based on what's happening in the industry. So there could be some fluctuation.
So you could hold the value from one year to the next, despite the fact that you're doing a twenty-year depreciation?
Yes, and it actually benefited the taxpayer in this case, because we didn't apply the inflation factors that we could have.
Okay, so was I asking her the correct question when I said, you're just gonna tell me it's not there?
Yes, yeah.
It's on you to clean your books up, you just can't come to the hearing and tell me, well, you know, it's obsolete, can't you see that?
Well, and, and they've reported all of that to us with an asset listing. So if they don't know what's there and what's not, then how can we know?
Okay, now my last question, I think I was told when I first joined the board, you guys do a on-site, one seventy-four years?
Not for personal property.
Oh, okay, that's-
That's just real property.
They have to actually touch.
Yeah, personal property, the law states that it's, uh, it's the taxpayer's responsibility to report to us, um, their asset listing, and we, we base our assessment on that. It does not-
Do you know on their honesty?
Well, that's where we start, with what they actually have. Where we get in dispute with them is how we depreciate it, and that's where the lives come in that you keep hearing about.
Okay.
But it does not require us to, to ever step foot on the property. It's their responsibility to supply the information. So it's, it's opposite of real estate that way.
Okay, and someone, I don't know if it's passed, or there was an attempt, uh, during the legislative session, twenty-two, no, not twenty-three, twenty-two, to disallow you from using drones. Did that pass, did I just hear that, or did that pass?
Yeah, we, we're, Gretchen, well, yes, that, that, we have some software that they're using to do change detection, um, but we've not passed that. We're trying to use technology to, uh, enable the real estate appraisers to do their job from in the office, so that they don't have to step foot on all the properties. But that's not been approved yet, that we can use that technology, so.
Well, they were trying to stop you from being able to use it, which was gonna be a great way to lie about what, what equipment you had out in the field. If drones, you can go look and see.
Yeah.
And if you say, I don't even, that's kind of telling somebody, no, we don't want you to go verify this. But that didn't pass, I just heard that, right, watched it, it didn't pass, okay.
Common sense must have prevailed, I mean, usually when legislature meets, we're, we're all in great jeopardy. But anyway, uh, and, and I think what you're getting at is, what the taxpayer agent has said is applying common sense. Well, and that's a double-edged sword, because, you know, common sense tells you that if they're manufacturing parts and, well, those parts fail, they're gonna manufacture a new one, and they may not tell you when they claim all these, whether it's new or whether it's old, all right.
We only know what, we only know what they tell us, and if they're replacing older equipment with newer, the value's gonna go up.
Right, yeah, if, if you know, yeah.
Yeah.
This is, we should have done all this when Ms. Shaw was on the line. Uh, not sure it would have changed anything, but, uh, anyway, um, seeing those citizens, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, move, Richard?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Okay, we are adjourned, last one.
See everybody.
Monday, on Monday, so.